Yeah, so it caps. We have a monumental loss of caps.
For the town or for each individual?
Like both?
Okay.
Both. This should be.
It's a bit of a confusion whether or not it was for the individuals or if it was from the town.
When you say for the individuals. Are you ready?
Reading call to order. Today is Tuesday, June 21st. The town council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street is now 6:49 PM.
Roll call. Councilman Lichardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman Borje.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Quorum is declared.
At this point, I'd like to, I'd like to move letter. In letter J, new business, item 06, resolution approving medical stop-loss insurance for the town of West Warwick in West Warwick Public Schools to the first order of business prior to the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, so if we can just read J6.
J6, resolution approving medical stop-loss insurance for the town of West Warwick and the West Warwick Public Schools.
Second.
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 Second. Moving second. Kristen, and I know we have somebody online.
Yeah, Anne should be there. Is she in the?
She's here.
Yes, I am.
I am. So this is Anne Capaza. She works for Gallagher. She's part of the broker team that manages our health insurance. And so every year we go out to bid for a stop-loss to try and get the best rate. This year, I believe we only had two bids. Is that correct, Anne?
That is correct, yes.
Three, three proposals, one of them being Blue Cross. So after we analyzed the data, went over it with Anne and Scott at Gallagher, it was determined that proposal number one was probably in the best interest of the town with Blue Cross. It does look like it's the highest increase, but it also has the most coverage. So if we had, and I'll let Anne explain this too, but I'm going to say it in my, my brief way. Four more high claimant health people would put us over what the savings would be for going to the next tier. So it's less risky to stay with Blue Cross as our stop-loss. I know, Anne, you're going to have a much better explanation of that than me, so.
Sure. Would you like me to hop in?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Thank you all again. Anne Capaza with Gallagher Benefit Services. Perhaps I'll take a step back and for the benefit of anyone who's not intimately familiar with stop-loss, just to give a little bit of background of exactly what it is. So as Kristen alluded to, it provides protection against catastrophic losses. So the town and school are self-funded for medical, meaning you pay the entirety of your claims. Catastrophic claims could exceed a million dollars today without, you know, without even trying. So what stop-loss does is it caps the risk per claimant. So that way, we know that the town and school are only subject to, in this case, $175,000 per claimant, and the stop-loss insurance will pay the balance. So every year, we go to bid. We went to five carriers this year. Three declined to quote right off the bat. They did not issue bids. Two others issued bids, but they were substantially higher than Blue Cross. One for comparable benefits was 134% more. The other was approximately 35. Now, as Kristen said, on a percentage basis, that's, it's astounding to think that Blue Cross at 20, 20-something percent could be the most favorable, but I want to take a step back and just come back to what I said initially. This is covering the catastrophic claims. So if general medical trend or inflation is running anywhere from 6% to 7%, these claims actually trend 19, 20, 25%. So stop-loss trend and average stop-loss increase is actually in the high teens, low 20s. Again, it's covering those claims that are the most costly and typically those that inflate at the highest clip. So it's very, it's weird to say it, but if we get a, you know, 10 or 15% stop-loss increase, that's like, that's, that's a very favorable increase. So low 20s, given your volume of high claims is not necessarily alarming. Now, with that said, as Kristen alluded to, our analysis is seeing, okay, if we increase to the next deductible level, which in this case is $200,000, what's the savings versus the risk? So as I said, you're at 175 now. To go to 200,000 would mean you're taking on an additional $25,000 of risk per claimant before the stop-loss insurance would start kicking in. So to go to the next level, you're saving, it would have been approximately $110,000. So how many people do we think are going to hit $200,000? That's, that's the analysis. How are we gonna, how quickly are we going to use up that savings? You currently have three claimants at or above 200,000. Four would roughly be break even. The second level to that is you have nine that are over $100,000 and still active and ongoing. So it would not be necessarily a no-brainer. I'm so sorry.
These are all employee claims, correct?
Well, it could be employee, spouse, or dependent. It's all covered members, but it is both town and school.
Okay.
So it's nine in addition to the three over the 200? So it's 12 and 12?
Nine, nine over 100,000. So those are ones that we're looking at as potential, potential stop-loss sets.
But those nine include the three that you talked about?
No, those are in addition.
Okay.
So there's 12 total?
Okay.
Yes, 12 over 100,000.
Okay.
Three presently at 200 or above. So you know, it's a risky, that's a risky proposition, only given your volatile. It actually isn't volatile. You've been unfortunately consistent the last two years in terms of high claims volume. But that is, that is the analysis. So it's our recommendation that that savings may not be worth the potential risk this year. The one other thing I would add is last year, we were able to negotiate Blue Cross's addition of two riders onto your stop-loss plan, which you still have today, which are, it's worth about 5%. So had we paid for it, you'd actually be at a higher, higher increase than you are today. But again, we negotiated it in. One is a no new laser protection. In stop-loss, a laser means that the carrier can say, we're not going to cover that individual at all, or we're going to cover them at an even higher specific deductible. So everyone else is covered at 175,000, but Jane Doe is going to be covered at 500,000 because of a transplant. You have in your policy, a provision that does not allow Blue Cross to apply any lasers upon next year's renewal. We also have a rate cap with Blue Cross. It's, it's high. It's a 60% rate cap. But again, it at least provides you that protection that we know 60% is the worst-case scenario in a, in a very catastrophic year. So those two provisions were added last year at no cost, but they do probably represent about a 5% value.
Great. Any questions for Ian or Kristen?
Kristen, also attached is the work-related injury stop-loss.
Correct. Anne, it was at the, it was the same situation?
Yeah, so that actually, so technically speaking, the standard stop-loss only covers non-work-related injuries, but certainly because police and fire don't have the benefit of any other occupational coverage, we have to purchase an additional coverage for them that covers them 24/7 on or off the job. It's fewer people. It's actually fewer claims. So the dollar amount for that, the percentage increase is actually a little bit smaller. It's part and parcel. You have to have both of them at the exact same level. So 175 for both.
Thank you. And we did meet with the school and Joe was in agreement. We, we agreed with Anne that this was the route that we should take.
Mr. Active and retired.
All covered members.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Anne, for attending tonight.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the June 7th, 2022, regular town council meeting and the June 16th, 2022 special town council meeting.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinances. Second reading of ordinance approving the amended pension plan excluding police and fire for the town of West Warwick.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on the ordinance?
Council President, this, to the first reading, we just have two additions to this that I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of, that they're on the record, and I will supply those items to the clerk. We added a whereas, the first whereas clause that wasn't in reading one to identify and reference the Rhode Island general law that brought us here in, in the first place. So whereas the Rhode Island General Assembly created Rhode Island General Law 45-21.5-1 at sequence on July 8th, 2021, and it also added the 11 employees that elected the option. So it'll be documented and consistent with the memorandum of agreement and the resolution.
Any questions for Mark on that?
Just to make sure this isn't like going to be a first reading now because that one changed, right?
No.
No.
Just want to make, I just want to make sure.
All you're doing is acknowledging a law that's already in existence, so that doesn't change any substantive part of the law.
Any other comment? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Borje?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
First reading of ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic Ordinance to Sydney Street and Sheffield Avenue.
Move approval of the ordinance?
Second.
Moving second.
This is a request from Major Ashenbow and the Traffic Safety Committee sponsored by Councilman Lichardi. There's been several accidents out at Sydney and Sheffield, and they're requesting a four-way stop, four-stop signs there. This came, it came from Major Ashenbow, the Traffic Committee.
Any questions for Elle? Any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilman Lichardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Borje?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to recuse myself from the licenses.
Business licenses.
Move approval of the business licenses?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion on the licenses? Any public discussion on the licenses? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Those licenses that have been approved was Amplify a Loud Speaker for Dimitri Benikos, Kristi Harrington for Amplify a Loud Speaker, Prospect Enterprises, for Filling, Prospect Enterprises, Mega West Warwick, Cat Knows Knots, Arts and Crafts License, all laundry license renewals, all filling station renewals, all flea market renewals, all holiday sales license renewals. There's only 54 of them, so.
I'm not going to read each individual one.
They've all been approved. No.
Can't hear. You can't hear in the back. I don't know.
Go on.
Appointments and resignations. Resignation of Michael McPhillips from the zoning board review.
Move acceptance of the resignation of Mike McPhillips with regret.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any comment? And I agree with Councilwoman Williamson. Mike has been an asset on that board for many years now. He's always kept it professional. He's always, I can tell you personally, he's gone out to every site that's been on the zoning board agenda. He checks it all out. He meets with people, the resident who might be requesting, and he also sometimes bumps into neighbors who come up to him, and it's going to be missed because he really did his homework on a lot of things in the zoning board.
Hacking with the board. I'd just like to join in the councilman's comments. Mike's been a great, great asset to the board.
Yeah, definitely. Sorry to see him go.
For the record, I, I am recusing myself regarding decision from the Ethics Commission that I must do this from any vote on I 01.
And 2?
In I 02, yes.
For the record, Councilman Lichardi recues himself from I 1 and 2. Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Sarah, if you could just send Mike a letter of thanks.
All right. Request from Randy Kuchu for appointment to the planning board review. He was a full-time member for term to expire July 2027.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion?
Once again, Randy previously served on the zoning board. Now he's serving as an alternate on the planning board. I think he'd be a great addition. I've worked with him in two capacities already, and he's, he does his homework, everything that comes before the board. He's well aware of it. And I'll get the phone call before the meeting if there's any questions. So I think he'll be a valuable asset as a full member.
I agree. Any questions on that?
No, I agree with that also. What we've been trying to do is those who are in, you know, the alternate positions moving up to permanent. So the only question I have for that is, he's, he's Democrat, right? Is there a thing with the Democrat, Republican on that at all, or is that?
I don't think on that board. No, planning.
Planning.
I don't think so either, but just to make sure, just so we don't have to go down another road later.
Zone, you have to have no more than. I don't believe so, but if you want, you can five minutes ago check the book. But zoning, you have to have a split of Democrats, Republicans, independents, et cetera. Planning.
Now, do you know?
I believe it's for both, because I just submitted a letter to Sarah suggesting that when you get the charter review, you get rid of those provisions.
Do we have the makeup of, of the board? Do you know?
I.
Any chance?
Who just left?
Mike Petraka.
Petraka. Anthony Petraka.
Anthony Petraka.
Do anybody remember what he was?
No, I do.
Planning board. Shall we do? No more than three of said members. Shall be members of the same political party. So they've got the same terms and conditions as zone. So right now, I don't know who sits on, but Randy is a, the Democrat. So I don't know whose place.
I'm not sure. I don't think we have their party affiliation next to them there. Is that?
Yes, there's. Three unaffiliated and two Democrats. Anthony Petraka is one of the Democrats.
Replacing. Right. Thank you.
Good catch, Mark. Thanks, Elaine. Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
New business. May 2022 monthly finance report.
Good evening again. Current year tax collections total $67,365,403.48, which is 101.09% of the budget for current year taxes. As we have completed all collection quarters, we continue to experience very strong collections. I would like to add the girls in the collector's office just do a fabulous job. Prior year tax collections are $1,106,549.09, which is equal to 73.77% of the budgeted amount. This line had been adjusted for the $362,699 from the 60-day rule back at the beginning of fiscal year '22 and accrued back to fiscal '21. This line will continue to grow slightly as everything we're collecting in June now is past due, and then July and August will also get accrued back for prior year tax collections. Overall, the revenues are at 97.35%, which is higher than expected. This mainly is attributed to strong tax collections and higher-than-expected town clerk and building revenues. Expenditures are trending under budget at 89.78%. This is 1.89 below the expected at 11 months into the fiscal year. The gap continues to shrink as we approach year end. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of $563,161.74 and operating revenues of $728,882.83. The bank balance as of June 2nd was $15,273,023.89. The unspent ARPA funds of $3,463,459.32 has been moved to an interest-bearing account at Sennoble Bank, so we can at least start making some interest on that. Not a lot, but it's something.
Any spending?
Yep.
He's had ARPA balance, both tranches or just the first one?
That is both, both halves.
It's only equal to half of what we're.
Of half, half, less what we spent.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks.
And the capital was in there as well. I didn't write about it in the memo, but the capital update was with.
Thank you.
Consideration of plan and trial period for administrative performance appraisal, self-assessments, and evaluations.
Really no resolution so, Mark?
No, I just, this is just informational. It's something that Sheri, or Personnel Director and I have been working on for a while. I feel it's important. I, I thought it was important for my own performance and development to, to meet with and, and have candid conversation with our various department heads. So something that we're going to start in July and see how it goes. I know there was an inquiry last year to see if we wanted to move towards like a hybrid merit-based salary-type thing for department heads. And I don't think we can do that without having a solid platform to even have something to base on. So just as we start to research and consider that, we need to start somewhere. So I'm proposing to use a combination of a performance appraisal, self-assessment, which would be done by our department heads, and then an employee evaluation that will be completed with me. I, I just think it's important that, you know, we, we assess where we are, develop some personal goals, and then just have candid conversations on where we think we can improve and address any issues as they come up. I mean, I understand where, myself included, we employ human beings, and we have good days and bad days, but I think it's important just to be on the same page, to get the best product from ourselves and set the example for all of our people.
Mark, if you, if you did this, are you saying that, no, I, I agree with it. I think it's a good idea. But are you saying that pay increases would, pay increases would, pay increases would be based on merit versus?
So there were comments last year to look in toward, to look towards a merit-based system. I don't think we can go totally merit, but I think we can come up with a, a hybrid plan, and this is just step one to get there. You need to, and Sheri can probably explain this much better than I, but we need to have guidelines and a, a salary compensation range for every position. And then factored into that could be a portion based on merit. If not, it just becomes too subjective, and you really need to have that foundation first before you can even consider that.
So the self-evaluations, that's for the department heads only?
I mean, we can expand it. I mean, this is something that, that I'm going to start with them. Other departments, I know the Police Department has its own appraisal system, so we'll start with there. We're looking to revamp our personnel manual and our administrative manuals over the course of the summer, probably get into the fall, and this would eventually become part of that after we work out whatever.
So I like it for department heads. I don't think it should be for everybody personally. I mean, that's, in my opinion, as far as that. But with department heads, it's good to have, because like you said, it sets goals that way. So I agree with that.
This, this sharing is just for department heads.
Yeah. So all right. So any employee evaluation form, is department head's going to be using that for each, are their employees, or is that just from you to the department heads?
What you have before you is just the self-assessment is what they do in advance that I'll sit with them and review along with the actual evaluation form.
How, how long before, like if someone does their self-assessment, July 1st, at what point are you, are you going to evaluate, or plan on evaluating? Two weeks, a month, a year?
So my experience with this is actually kind of based on stuff that my mother did when she worked at Rhode Island Hospital. You, you give the self-assessment, and you want a valid, a, a good effort on that. So I would anticipate giving ample time to get that done, probably 30 days at least, you know, with some reminders. And then sit down while they're doing that, I can start the evaluation section, you know, based on personal experience and past knowledge and, and other input factors, and then sit down and go over them. And then, you know, however, the, the part that's still in flux is when do we do it? Do we do a quarterly follow-up? Do we do a six-month follow-up? I would anticipate probably six months is adequate to look at, you know, where are you at your goals? You know, for example, you say, you know, somebody might say, I want to do some more professional development, and if we can help facilitate a professional development class to get, help them with those goals, then we'll do it, and then we'll see where they are.
So I think what are you saying, that the self-assessment will be done upfront?
Correct.
Currently. That gives you an idea as to where an individual thinks they are. You set some personal goals in that timeframe as well, and then towards the end of the year, maybe interim, maybe quarterly. Depends how many you're talking about. You get back to, hey, this is how, this is what I think. This is what we believe. These are your strengths. These are your weaknesses. This is what we need to work on. This is where you, you should be able to, you know, help others because you're so good at what you do towards the end of the year. And then perhaps raises would be partly, and I agree that it can't be totally, but partly based on the overall process.
Correct. And, and that's kind of an intricate process. I, I'm still learning a little bit about it. I know, I think the council president mentioned his personal experiences, and Sheri mentioned her from past experiences. It's, it's going to take a little bit of work and, you know, study and, you know, have something that.
Actually, if it's meaningful, it's, it's a lot of work. Yes.
So as the town manager said, I'm very familiar with this process because this is the process we actually use. And so my, my self-assessment has to be in by December 1st, and that goes to my boss, and it puts in.
Fucking calendar year?
Yeah, every year, December, June, I think it's December 1st. We get, we get notification in November, hey, your self-assessment's due, tells us. We go in there, it's pretty much, we're writing a review on ourselves, like, like the town manager said. At that point, you also can remind, you know, things that you have done, stuff that people may have forgotten. Now, we do it from frontline all the way up through management, as high up as can be. And then at that point, evaluations are done, you know, and, and again, things that you can work on, things that you've done, you know, and it does include, with us, it does include like the, the merit. So depending on, you know, where you are with your numbers and so on and so forth, and your goals, you know. And then we also have a third step to this, which is your development plan, which is the same type of thing where you would put in, this is where I'd like to be in 2023 and what my goals are, whether it's a different department, whether it's learning something new or whatever, and we would meet depending on the situation or what it is you're looking to do. It's quarterly or biannually, and then go from there. And I know this is something new, and, and I'd be more than happy to help you guys with some of this because I, I've been doing it for 20 years. because I, I've been doing it for twenty years. So it's, it's definitely a.
I think some part of it, it'll be, I think it'll be challenging. Some of it may be a little difficult because sometimes people aren't comfortable either to talk about themselves or, or listen. But, I mean, I know I benefited from it in my career. You know, the Police Department was very structured. We did evaluations, you know, for a long time. They went away for a little while because some of it was, you know, affected promotional processes. So there were some questions. But since worked out various bugs, and I, I think there's a benefit to it as far as, you know, having a, a professional organization.
Any questions for Mark on this? Again, this was just an FYI.
Resolution proposing salary increases for non-union employees for fiscal year 2023.
So I don't see one attached. No resolution attached.
Possibly not to the agenda, but I emailed it to.
Okay.
There's no resolution. Hold on, I need to make sure. Oh, no, it is there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
In the email.
Yes. So that doesn't need to be attached? And I, you've said that, that's, that's the case, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we can attach it after the fact.
Okay.
Are we voting on, I don't mark you.
I don't think it's been moved. Hasn't been moved, so we can't really discuss it until we move it.
Move the resolution.
Second, move a second. Sheri?
Hi. So I am here to present a proposal for increases for our non-union employees. As you're aware, we have contracts in place for our unionized employees. The, we're in three, in year two of our three-year contracts with them going into year two. Those contracts each contain a series of raises that'll be coming up once July first and then several have it also for January first increases coming. I think everybody's aware it's a very competitive job market right now. You know, it's, we want to retain the, the good employees that we have. And, you know, the best way we can do that is try to recognize their hard work by offering a wage increase. We also all know that unfortunately, the price of gas and the price of groceries and, you know, all of that has gone up. So it's really incumbent upon us, I think. It has been budgeted, which Kristin can speak to. The dollar amount has been budgeted. So this is a covered suggested raise. But again, you know, to be able to retain the good employees we have, attract any new employees that we might need to attract for non-union positions and to try to just help people stay afloat with unfortunately how the economy is right now. We are suggesting a three-point-two-five percent increase for non-union folks. There are a couple of positions that have been excluded because they were recently hired. So our town planner was recently hired, a wastewater superintendent was recently hired, and then a few people that are under contract, the town manager, the fire chief, police chief, and then a couple of other more part-time positions that were recently changed kind of outside. They get paid by the job that they do. They're, they're kind of categorized a little bit differently.
So how many people would this apply for then?
Uh, I'd have to count, sorry.
Maybe took off a lot, just right there, so.
Uh, not really.
It's like about twenty?
Sixteen.
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 Yeah. So basically, all of the department heads, again, with the exception of the planner who was just hired. And then also the electrician over at wastewater, I think the, the committee's aware of the change that was made there and that person was switched from exempt to non-exempt and then back to non-exempt. There was a lot of confusion there where through no fault of the person, they, they were hired as an exempt employee at a higher rate and that position is not an exempt position. That was an error. So that position is already well over budget for the town.
So one of the concerns, and I know I shared with Mark, was we have a handful of employees, non-union, that have been promoted in the fiscal year 2022. And they've received gradual increases or hefty increases. And, you know, so my question would be, why would we include them considering you're taking people out who just got hired? And to me, anybody who got hired as a department head or anything in 2022 hasn't done the job in a full year's cycle. And, or if they changed their status to one to another and see, received a increase, why would we include them?
Ones that are popping into my head would be DPW. I know we had some changes there. Those were already back the end of last year. I know it probably seems like yesterday, but it's really already been a little time. And again, this would be, this is our proposal. This is all that's budgeted for this fiscal year for our non-union raises. So to forego giving them anything, they would really be going like almost two years without anything.
Well, and again, I, I, I don't know exactly, but I know Sewer Department, Department Head was hired. I think you just said that, that he was excluded. No, that's the new one. That's the assistant.
Oh, well, he wasn't just hired.
Well, he was just promoted to assistant. Okay, okay. I, I don't know with DPW, the recycling coordinator was just on the agenda a few weeks ago for a increase. I'm trying to think who else is on there, but I.
The office manager for wastewater.
Office manager for wastewater. So these are all non-union who have not done the position or received a increase over a, this fiscal year. So why are we including them? That's the question.
So I think for certain, it was like the office manager at wastewater, quite frankly, was hired at a much, much lower rate. We changed that position quite a bit and lowered the salary quite a bit.
He knew the salary coming in, right?
He did.
And he agreed to the salary coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think what's being lost is though, is, is those positions when we, when those people accepted promotions and, and Sheri and I gathered to come up with proposals for a salary offer. You know, we took into consideration what was budgeted for fiscal twenty-two. And in a lot of, in some of those cases, the salary was less than the person that they were replacing because of some different certifications or criteria that they had. And we considered, you know, based on, you know, were they going to be looking for healthcare or, you know, what other supplemental information they had. But predominantly what was budgeted for that year and the previous holder, what was their salary? And then we looked at, you know, when was it probably going to come up where there'd be salary adjustments proposed? So their offers were made with anticipation of addressing things later. I know like the DPW folks, you know, moved in October. So like the, like Sheri had said, it's, it's been a decent amount of time. But in our mind, the offers we made at those time were anticipating something coming in the next fiscal year. Where the ones that we just did, you know, within the last month or so, we took that into consideration. Plus obviously adjusting based on people's needs, if you will. Again, you know, do they need healthcare, not need healthcare? With some flexibility on, you know, trying to attract and maintain certain people in certain positions.
I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, Mark. If one year has gone by, I'm willing to revisit this and that person who's been in the position for a year. But for having people not in a position for a year who accepted, and, and some did get a hefty increase. We're talking ten thousand dollars. Um, and at that point, after they did the position for a year, I'm willing to say, let's look at it and reassess it at that time. But right now, some people have been in their positions for three months or received the raise less than a month ago or whatever. And, and now we're going to offer more. And, and I understand the market is tough right now and I know it's hard to get employees. Jeez, we just gave an early retirement and we're giving up twelve positions that would have to refill. And, and, and you, you're stating my case. It's going to be hard to refill them. And, you know, and I understand paying them more and more is great, but again, they haven't been in the position for a year. And, and after a year, and you're talking about assessments and so on with department heads. If you haven't been in a position for less than a year, how can you assess them and give them a raise of a flat raise of three-point-two-five?
Again, I'm not looking at this as a merit increase. It's not.
It's not, but it is.
It's not for, it is an increase, but we're staying with what we consider the market rate, if you will, with inflation, with what keeps people, which keeps us attractive to, in order to attract and maintain decent people. So I don't think there is any, you know, in, of the list, like really short, what I would consider short timeframe shockers, if you will, that aren't warranted for this new fiscal year adjustment. And, and that's why I, I made that proposal.
I, I have two issues with this. First one being if it was budgeted, why wasn't this presented during budget season? When we have more appropriate time for us to discuss this rather than right after we pass the budget? That's my biggest issue. Second issue I have is, you know, you're saying it's because the unions have their representation and they're getting two to two and a half percent and they're going to get three and a quarter. So without representation. So I have that as an issue as well, is why are they getting?
Two, two increases. So they're getting two now and then two in January. The raises are two percent now, July one, I'm sorry. And then two percent again in January for the union.
Right. So I misread it the way it's in, in here then.
Right. So to your first point, to your first point, during the budget process, when we went over the general government, we said, we highlighted the fact that we included thirty-five thousand dollars in anticipation of non-union salary adjustments. And to your second point, like Sheri just explained, the combined raises for the, I think all three unions all got six-month raises. So in a lot of cases, two and a two or two-point-two-five or whatever. So generally four plus over the entirety of the year, which doesn't equal a four when you do six month and six months. This proposal is just doing it once and not bifurcated raises. So.
But like I say, I mis, misread that, but the, still, this as is here, to me, should have been presented during budget season. So we can have this discussion while going through the budget. I don't remember, or I got confused as far as that thirty-five thousand in that time because we had just given raises to non-union employees. So, you know, it's.
I lost you on the last.
Yeah, when did we?
Didn't we just do that? We did some for the Civic Center. So are they included on this?
No.
No.
I'm all for, and I've, I've always said this, if one group gets an increase, then, then every group should get an increase. But I also, I'm trying to just, just get everything together. I love the idea of the assessment and, and the goals. I think that's a great idea. And I've also heard what Dave said, and I agree with what, a hundred percent of what Dave said as far as these people haven't been here that long. You know, they agreed to a salary, they agreed to an increase. It's a promotion for some, which is great. But let them do the job and assess it. So I mean, if, if we're voting on, and I'm looking at the recommendation here, um, from, from you to Mark, are we voting on this as a whole? Based on the positions, based on the positions that you're recommending?
I believe you can amend it or the solicitor could.
The second thing that I, I'm not clear with in is, over the years, this has never been on the agenda. It's always been the department heads follow what local ninety-four is. And I know if we follow, it's going to cost us a little more money, by the way. But secondly, the last two times, the last three times, this has been on the agenda. The first time, Ernie put it on the agenda because we did not have a local ninety-four contract. And at the time, it didn't seem like we were going to get to a resolve with that contract. So Ernie wanted to make sure that he took care of his department heads at the time. So he put it on the agenda, brought it before the council for approval because they weren't going to be able to follow the contract because they didn't know how long it was going to be. Then last year, I know you were fairly new to the town manager role. It was on the agenda. It was brought before us. So I brought it up last year was this is something that usually we follow local ninety-four's contracts. So why is it on the agenda? Now it's on the agenda again this year. So I, I'm just wondering if this is something we're going to do every year with the agenda item, which isn't a bad thing. I mean, it's good that it's, it's here and open, but all department heads that have been here, and there hasn't been many, but most of them that have been here more than five to ten years now, or over ten years, usually they follow those contracts. And that includes when they went for zero percent raises too. They got zero percent also. So.
So basically, like you had just said, I'm, I followed the guidance from my predecessor who did it by resolution. So that, that's what I followed. Again, our department heads are typically our higher salaried items. And in my opinion, probably should be separate because our salaries compound higher than our unionized workers. And I know we made a concerted effort through negotiations after years of zeros. And they're, they're the people where the rubber meets the road to get the job done in town. So I'm, I'm happy we were able to make some progress for our unionized employees over the last couple of collective bargaining agreements to get them in something that is, you know, respectable living. And I know obviously over time you can, you can enhance that, but at least the basics are there for, for those that don't. My other point would, and I mean this with all due respect, if you just went with the, whatever council ninety-four got, it obviously defeats a plan to go towards some type of merit-based system and then totally defeats the comments on who got hired in what year. Because then it's just a percentage times a job title.
But I'll tell you right now, for instance, if I got hired in October, come December, January is review time for us. I don't get a three-point-two-five percent. I'll give, I get a three-point-two-five percent, but it's prorated from October to January, not for a full year. So that's what I'm saying is you've got people who are in roles, who've been promoted, decent salaries, decent increases that are looking at a straight three-point-two-five for less than a year's worth of performance.
Right. And my, my point was, is that when Sheri and I met to put together a compensation package, just use it, October, for example, looking at what the fiscal twenty-two budget contained for salary, what the predecessor was, obviously dictated how we advertised for it in the first place. We made a compensation package offer in anticipation of having a salary proposal adjustment for the next fiscal year.
But Mark, that, that's dangerous because if you're appointed before a council, that could say no. How do you make a promise to somebody you don't know that's going to go through?
So I don't know if we, I could say we made a promise.
Or an assumption.
We, ourselves, we know we're going to make a proposal. I don't, I don't know how, you have to, you have to be able to offer something to somebody. So if you're not going to anticipate that, you're going to offer a higher salary from the get-go.
Right.
I, I think it's a delicate balance to try to find something that's, you know, going to get us a quality applicant, a quality candidate, and then, you know, be responsible to be able to, you know, manage a budget.
So, so I think what I'm hearing you say is that salaries that were offered were adjusted downward to reflect the fact that on July one, you were going to recommend an increase. That being said, I kind of get to the point where I think we're micromanaging here. If we have the Human Resource Director and the Town Manager making a recommendation, knowing what they have done, when you look at this list, there's only one person on the list that hasn't been here a year. And it's not a merit increase. And I am, I've been a big proponent about going to performance appraisals. I think that's very important. I don't like the idea of saying blanket, whatever the rate is across the board. I don't think that that should be the case. So I'm happy to hear that you're going in, in that direction. If indeed you, working in conjunction with the Human Resources Office, have presented salaries to people and hired people with certain, with certain actions that you're going to take, I, I feel that we should honor that. Again, we get, we're getting into micromanaging, picking out people who should be or shouldn't be. Again, we get, we're getting into micromanaging, picking out people who should be or shouldn't be. That's their job.
And this isn't something that would necessarily even have to come.
I don't think it should come to the council either. I think it's men, I think it is micromanaging. I believe that, I know the 35,000 was indeed in the budget discussion. I do remember it. I know that it was put in there. So I don't think it's, I I'm not sure that it should be, as you said, never was. I don't think it should be before the council, but it is.
And it's right in front of us, and we have to make a vote on this.
Yes, we do. And again, my recommendation, my personal feeling, and what I'm gonna do is trust that they're doing what they're supposed to do and have done and support what they're doing at this point in time. That that's, I I don't think that I am, I am qualified to say who is or who isn't, because I'm not here on a day-to-day basis.
And we, as a council, whether we knew it or not, I I remember, do remember that conversation. We we approved this for the budget already, so to go back and not approve it now, we're kind of going back and changing our minds from what we did previously.
Well, that's why I said this should have been brought forward during the budget proposal.
I believe, I don't know how in-depth, I don't know how in-depth we went into it, but I I do remember it.
Well, in November, when I said we just recently gave raises, it was November 2. You know, a lot of the same people that had 3% raise effective back to July 1 of last year. You know, so that's what I was talking about as far as they're getting the raises. So, you know, this is where, you know, I got a little confused as far as, as far as that goes. I don't remember a discussion during budget season about future raises for the non-union people. I just remember this discussion from back in November, where we gave the raises for the non-union officials. So that's my issue is we just gave them a 3% raise back there and some other stuff like PTO time and everything else. I do agree with the performance base, and I do agree with Dave. Anybody who's been in their position for less than a year, which is more than one person, I don't think they should be getting this right now. They should at least be in their position for a year. Let the evaluations start and start making their their raises based on their value, on on their performance, not just the blanket raise.
But again, this is not performance-based. We never have had performance-based. This is cost of living. And by the way, the cost of living increase was inflation rate was 7%. This is 325. This is cost of living, basically what it is. That's what we're talking about tonight. It is not performance. I think it should be performance. I I would charge Mark and Sherry to make sure that next time. Again, I don't think this should be before the budget, the the total budget amount should be. And how it gets dispersed should be under your purview, not ours, so.
For the record, I support you, Ms. Town Manager. But I disagree with you on this one. And I feel that anyone hired, moved into a role with an increase in pay or received a pay increase in the fiscal period 2021 to 2022 should not receive their increase right now. That's, that's, that's what I think. It's not personal, doesn't get into personnel, it's for us, and that's what I think.
Their increase when they moved into new spots.
Again, but they said that the the increase they gave them anticipated this increase. Am I, am I mistaken? Is that what you've said?
So the offers that we made were based on a fiscal 22 budgeted amount, what we advertised for, what the previous person in that position made. But obviously, we anticipated doing something in fiscal 23. What that was yet, was yet to be determined, but I don't want to say the offer was artificially low. It is what it, what it was, but we anticipated addressing it with inflation or whatever the parameters would be for fiscal 23.
Dave, can I ask you a question? You had mentioned before, Ernie, nothing like this was ever on the agenda, correct? You're the longest serving.
They follow local 94.
They follow local 94, but never had to get approved by the council. Okay, so I agree with Mary Beth on one thing, this is micromanaging, okay? I try not to spend a lot of time in this building at all because that's micromanaging. I don't believe the council should be micromanaging everything that's going on, right? This is part of that, but because it is before us, I'm gonna go with what Dave and Councilman Luchardi said that anybody less than a year shouldn't be getting anything at this point, so their one-year timeframe is up, only because it's here. And then don't ever put it on the agenda again. If you don't need our approval for this, don't put it on the agenda again. That's my suggestion.
So you simply could, if we decided, if if the council decided to do that, we can make an amendment and and vote on the amendment if that's, if, yeah, if that's what the council decides they want to do.
Yeah, not to be controversial, but what I'm hearing is that you should reject it, and I have the authority to just mirror the council 94 agreement for this year, regardless of who's in what what time, what timeframe they've had, that we're going with a blanket council 94. Take out whatever factors that I considered or tried to consider that we should just go with what council 94 is, no matter the position, the.
I would hope you wouldn't do that. I would hope you.
I mean, I.
Right, what what I'm saying is, is I would like for you to manage, and by managing, by having these evaluations in place, start the evaluations for anybody who's already been in their position for less, only been in a position for less than a year and work off a performance base or whatever way you're gonna do it as time goes on. Anybody who's been in their position for over a year, let them have whatever raise you determine, whether it's a 3.25 or whatever it might be.
I don't anticipate having an evaluation system vetted and fixed. I think that's gonna be probably just under a year-long process to be able to work out the kinks and and have something that has supportive information.
We don't have a baseline right now. That's the problem. The reviews have never been done. So until we have a baseline to say, hey, you do this well, but we'd like you to work on this. It's kind of hard to penalize someone monetarily when maybe they didn't realize they needed to work on whatever it was. And then we haven't set any goals yet. Again, that's like, you know, a good thing, obviously, you set the goals, and either you made it or you don't.
You're not penalizing. I mean, we're not taking money away. And I can't really say too much more because I'm gonna get a look from Tim.
Would agree with that.
Tim's gonna shake his head and say, I've crossed the line.
We're kind of, if we're kind of agreeing that we shouldn't be micromanaging, then then what's to say we take no action and and defer to them to make the decision? I mean, if that's what we're saying they should do, why don't, why, why would we?
So so we're penal, we're, we're, people's lives are gonna be affected because Mark put it on the agenda. And that's wrong. That's, I, I, that's just wrong. Sorry. These people, these people clearly, based on history, would expect to have a raise.
That's not what I said. I mean, take no action and allow them to make the best decision.
With what you're saying, but Mark, Mark said that he would hope he wouldn't do that, so.
I would hope he wouldn't do that.
Yeah, but but again, we are impacting these people's lives. It is a cost of living adjustment. It is not a reflection of, which I think is wrong, and I've been pressing for three years to have an evaluation system. And I, I fully believe we will have one at this point in time. But to impact these people's lives who are anticipating this because it's happened every year is just wrong. I I think it's wrong. I, but that's my personal opinion. It's, it will impact their livelihood.
As I I feel the same way Councilman Luchardi says that I'm for the raises. By by no means do I want to affect anybody, but anybody who's been in less than a year.
They just got their.
It's my only concern. And, you know, we.
But they said they modified the raises based on the anticipation of paying. Again, unless I'm hearing that incorrectly, and and then couple it with the only reason that we're, this is before us, which it shouldn't be, and it's taken far more time than it should have, is because he put it on the agenda, thinking that that was the norm based on his predecessor. I would agree, let's not vote on it and let them do what they need to do.
I'm gonna make a motion to take no action.